Monday, April 1st, 2024. You can have a roll call, please.
Barazza. Lancy.
Here.
Beck.
Here.
Peiper. Chanset.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Solfa.
Here.
Baron.
Here.
Lehman.
Here.
Ayazi.
Here.
Malay.
Here.
Uer.
Here.
Saron.
Here.
Vocal singer. Second call, Peiper. Thank you. Twelve present, two absent.
All right, thank you. Just a reminder for everybody, if you're going to come up and use the mic tonight, make sure you adjust it so you can see the little green light come on when you're talking and you can hear yourself over the speakers in the room. That way, we know we're getting you out on broadcast. Items to be removed, added, or changed for tonight's meeting? We do have one thing we're going to add in an executive session. It would be 6A, or we'll add it under 6 as other, for land acquisition. Okay. Move on to matters from the public for anything not on the agenda, since there's only one item.
In order, I think, we do have to quantify that if we're changing the agenda.
You would like us to vote on it? Okay. See, we let the lawyer leave, and then you catch me. Okay, then we will vote on first the amendment to the agenda for tonight to add the executive session.
Salute.
Motion by Chanset, second by Solfa. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Right, then, next would be matters from the public for items not on the agenda tonight. Is there anybody here for anything that's not on the agenda? We'll move on right to our discussion tonight on resolutions regarding the Israel-Hamas war. We had three memos that were, or a memo that was sent out with three different resolutions in it, and I guess what I would say is, I think, I don't know if I want to do public comment first, because I know that there's people here that want to speak, or do we want to talk about the three resolutions first?
Neither. I think we should talk about whether or not we want to have resolutions, and why, and what, and how. The public spoke for 20 minutes two weeks ago, which is the purpose for this meeting, so that we can discuss.
Okay.
So how about we discuss first, then let the public speak?
Okay. And that's what I wanted to try to gauge, was what, where we wanted to go with this tonight. So I guess, I don't know if we want to go around the table on this one, or if we want to just speak, let each one of us speak that wants to get something off on this. I think we should do that. Dan?
I would recognize that resolutions and proclamations issued by the mayor tend to be subjective in nature sometimes, is that we will pick up a topic that's important to us, our community, and we will move forward with it. We will celebrate it year to year, things like Arbor Day, things like recognitions, things like that. Rarely have we delved into national politics or international politics at all. It's had been something that was organic from this group. Very rarely have we taken up something ask of us. But that said, sometimes it doesn't take a lot to get momentum moving for a proclamation in the mayor's office, if it's a feel-good kind of thing, or if it's the right side of history kind of thing. So I'm not opposed to a resolution like this, but it should be one that can garner very quick support with a debate that does not last tremendously long, because the answer should be clear to all of us, if we're going to take an issue up like this at all. That's what I would say.
Thank you. Alderman Solfa?
And I have spoken with many people, you know, since we had this last discussion, and kind of the general theme that I received is, why are we doing this? And what is, what purpose does it serve? And we're the city of Batavia, and we don't really want to necessarily offend one side or the other on this situation, because it's not something where it's a cut-and-dry situation. You know, some, one person commented to me, why don't we just do a resolution, and we have the peace bridge? Yeah, we, peace on earth, that's what Batavia stands for. The general comments that I've received is more of a situation of, why are you guys doing this? They're just not quite sure that it serves a purpose, and these are from people with all different views on the whole situation. You know, it's not like they're, I'm not like I'm talking to people and they all have the same view. They all have, believe me, expressed different views on this, and, but the main view that they've, the main theme that they've come through is, regardless of what their view is, they're just not quite sure that this is an appropriate thing that the council should even really be dealing with at this point in time.
Yep. Alan, just to add to that, so I don't think there's anybody in this room who wishes for war, or atrocities, or rapes, or child trafficking, or any of the things that are going on anywhere in the world. These are commonsensical statements. Common sense, in my opinion, does not require a resolution. Second, as a governing body of the city of Batavia in the state of Illinois, our job when we are voted into office is to manage this city as best as possible. Full stop. Not weigh in on geopolitical issues, international issues, things that we have little, if any, sway or influence on. That being said, to Dan's point earlier, the idea of passing a resolution or something along the lines of peace on earth, generically speaking, not opposed to that whatsoever, but a specific resolution for a ceasefire for this, I am very much opposed to, because there are atrocities across the world, week in, week out, and we are not being asked to chime in on every single one of these. And if we're not, that's very hypocritical. There are various, myriad atrocities across many countries at all times in this world, and the city of Batavia, city council, is not asked weekly to denounce this, denounce that, pass a resolution for this, or a proclamation for that. Again, this is all commonsensical stuff from my perspective, and I'm not, I am not somebody who hasn't had international conflict affect his family, because I have. Both my parents are immigrants, both my pregrants lived in communist countries, myriad stories, so I can feel for any and all people who are suffering from atrocities. But again, for this particular council and what our job is, it makes no sense to me to pass a specific resolution asking for a ceasefire for one specific conflict and no others. It just doesn't make sense to me. My two cents.
You're?
I have to agree with what was just said. Yeah, we've never been asked, and I was not voted in to comment on international politics. It's just not, that's not my position. And I will frankly say, I'm not well-educated enough to do that, because that's not something that I am tasked to do. And there are dozens, hundreds of conflicts. I mean, nobody's come to say anything about Ukraine, or the Congo, or Niger, Somalia, Ethiopia, Haiti. I mean, we can go on and on and on. There are conflicts all over the place, and it's horrible, and I don't want conflict. Interestingly, we could say peace on earth. Well, peace on earth means different things to different people as well. There's probably people across the city that define peace differently than others, so what does that really mean? I mean, and again, it's just a statement. Yeah, I want peace. In my, my view of peace, I want, you know, no hunger, no famine, no poverty. Those are all things that I want. So, yeah, I would, I agree that those are, you know, they're virtuous things, but it's not to our charge to go and, and say, hey, this is what we believe in, and have a proclamation for that. And although it may feel good to make those statements, it's, the UN just passed a resolution, and that hasn't made a difference. Somehow, I doubt that Batavia is going to get everybody to change their mind and say, oh, yeah, Batavia's on board, so we should, we should make our, that was, that was the thing we were looking for, was Batavia. So I don't want to get in this thing where we have to have these conversations all the time, because as soon as we start this trickle, it could turn into a waterfall. We have somebody all the time coming, oh, hey, we would like you to do this, we want you to support this, we want to support that, which are outside of the purview of Batavia. So that's my stance on this.
Lancy?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not going to beat a dead horse. I'll just second what Alderman, I see in Alderman, you were stated, you know, I just think it holds no place here. I think it's a waste of time for this group. You can take these thoughts and internalize them, and bring them home, and be an activist all you want outside of this body, but I just, I don't see how this furthers our governing in any way, shape, or form in this town. If anything, it will divide this town.
I guess I'll say, from my standpoint, the comments that I've heard from people that have stopped me, called me, however I've been contacted, are, you know, somewhat divided on it, but the majority of it is, again, coming back and asking, why are we trying to do this at this level? It's just more of a statement of, you know, how do we support it? And I don't know that I say, that I would be supporting all the comments of the residents that I received if I was to say yes to a resolution for a ceasefire, without including every conflict that's out there. And, you know, I don't know how we do that, and the amount of time that we would spend on that would be enormous. And again, that's not what we're charged to do here. You know, we've got enough problems in our own country that we can't seem to resolve. To go out and say that we're going to resolve the rest of the world is really a tough thing to say yes to. I mean, it's what everybody wants, but again, how do we do that?
Alderman Beck?
I would say that I'm, I'm not as worried about being inundated weekly with different conflicts to weigh in on. I think, I know that I heard it when we, when we flew the pride flag, for example, like, well, you're going to fly this flag for this group now, or you're going to fly this group with, you know, this flag, and our flag, and this flag, and support this and that. And we're at a moment in time where there was a group of people that are hurting, in that instance too, the pride and flag instance, and we wanted to show a sign of support and solidarity for them. I think in this moment that we're in, we have residents that are hurting, we have residents that are affected, you know, long distance, or thinking about family that are impacted on the ground where the conflict is taking place on both sides, and putting together a resolution and taking some time to just kind of recognize that hurt, and recognize that we are, as members of Batavia, Illinois, in the United States, kind of feeling powerless to do anything about it. We can pass this, we could pass something, we can send it to our legislators, who could send it to the federal level, who could maybe make a difference. I don't, I, I support passing something that says that we see you, we're sorry you're hurting, we'd like this to end as quickly as possible, just like you would, without delving too far out of our bounds, because these are our residents too. And, yeah, I'll end there.
I just heard the term residents, and that is who we were voted in by, was the residents of Batavia. If I recall correctly, from the last time this was up, in terms of the speakers from the public, well, there were a few people that were residents of Batavia. If my recollection is correct, I would say more than 50% of them were admittedly not residents of Batavia. So I mean, we just be, I just want to point that out, that, you know, there's people who have their own political views, who aren't even residents of Batavia, who are coming and trying to promote this. And when the term residents come up, I think we need to remember who's driving the bus on some of these things. And I will admit that there are some very concerned residents of Batavia. If, like I said, if I recall correctly, there were quite a few people who were not residents of Batavia, who spoke very passionately and very eloquently, but they were not residents of Batavia.
Alderman Chanset?
I think Alderman Beck did hit the nail on the head on this one. For the number of times that we look in the audience and see nobody, and wish there were people listening to the things we were talking about, or we see a room full of people that leave after the horse and pony is done on a Monday night, and we talk about the budget or something else. There are people in the community who are hurting. We don't get requests like this often, and it would be disingenuous of me in the position I was in, especially having asked for a community that was hurting, with a community that had dead LGBTQ kids, and looking for a way to stop that from happening, starting with a beacon of hope, which was the pride flag. It wasn't a lot to ask, it didn't really affect a lot of people. It was a good start. If the UN has already actually voted on something, yeah, we may actually be a little late to this, but it wouldn't hurt to recognize the hurt, recognize that we have a room full of people here that want to be represented, and say, we're not taking sides on your issue, but we do want the pain to stop, and we want the people above us who have the authority to do what they're supposed to do. If we get one of those every cow, I wouldn't be opposed to a five-minute discussion on, yep, this is another one of those, but we're not going to get those. We're not going to. And God forbid we get those, it's not a world I want to live in. I don't think we will, though. But I would support Alderman Beck if that's the route we're going.
Alderman Lancer?
I would just ask the common sense question. I mean, so what's the end game? So say we do pass this resolution, say it does go up the stack, say somebody in our country does do something, first of all, we don't know what that is. Second of all, I'm not even sure we have two parties at the table who are at war, who are willing to a ceasefire. So if we don't have anyone that's going to abide by it, who's actually fighting it, once again, what are we talking about? I really don't understand why we're talking about someone else's war here. If you want to go fight this battle, go over there, fight the battle, okay? Because that's, that's reality over there. This is our reality here. Come up to the mic if you want to talk. Come up to the mic if you want to talk.
We're not going to have conversation like this. I'll clear the room, and we'll vote on what we're going to talk about.
Come up to the mic and tell me how I'm lying.
When I ask for public comment, I will allow people to speak at the mic. You cannot have a conversation with any of us unless you're at the mic, so please don't have outbursts from the audience. I want this to be civil, and I want it to be like it was the last time. We could have a discussion, we don't have to go back and forth. So that's how it's going to be.
Alderman Lehman?
Thank you, Alderman Beck, for your words. You said everything that was in my heart and mind, so thank you for putting it into words. And I think what I want to be careful of is that we take the stance, well, we can't fix everything, so let's fix nothing, or we can't say that we care about everything, so let's care about nothing. So if anything, this would show our representatives, which this is, we, you know, there's different levels of governance, and so we have a voice, just like we're talking about with the electric utility bill, that we send to the next level, that goes to the next level, and it just will send the message that Batavia cares, we care about our residents. I'm looking out here, I see many people here who live in Batavia. They go to our schools, they are on our school board, they represent Batavia, they live here. So yes, these are our residents. And then, these are our residents with their friends, with their community, who are here supporting them, and showing their love for them too. This is, yes, this is happening on the other side of the world, but it's impacting people who live in our community. So it does matter, and our voice here does matter.
Peiper?
Speaking to some of my constituents, I was given the impression that our congressional representative did ask for city input on this topic, which does kind of put the ball in our court. I do agree, as a city, as the city of Batavia, we don't have boots on the ground over there. We don't have a delegation or anything like that. It's questionable that we can provide any special input in terms of how best to work out this situation. I don't know that anyone truly can, it's gotten that unwieldy, but it's fair to say that this isn't something that is just going to apply to every little conflict throughout the world. This is very much an initiative that the US is involved in, and which our congressional representatives have asked for our input. So that, you know, I would argue, does kind of, you know, spur us to unique action that doesn't necessarily apply to everything in the world, but just this circumstance.
For anybody who wishes to communicate directly with the federal administration, you can go to the whitehouse.gov website and submit any and all requests, commentary, criticisms, complaints, every single day, day after day, inundate them with phone calls, emails, anything and everything. A resolution from the city of Batavia will not be anywhere near as effective as that, in my opinion. Again, I'm going back with the city of Batavia, we're here to administer this city. You want to complain to the federal government? Please do. I want you to. Every single day, send in emails, send in phone calls, those get tallied at the federal level. You want to have input? That's directly to the source. It's my opinion.
At this point, I would ask if there's more comment from the council. Do we want to discuss the three resolutions that were brought up to us, that were provided by the public, looked up by our own staff at our direction, to see if there was something out there that they thought would be palatable to us to, to go on with? Did anybody not read the resolutions?
Alan, may I, may I make a suggestion that maybe we do a straw poll on council if we can even come into an agreement to, let's come to agreement if we can do a resolution that acknowledges that the city of Batavia supports our voice in saying that we care about our community, we care about those hurting in the world and in our community, and kind of like the one that Bolingbrook, that we were emailed. And if we can, do we have a straw poll that we can even have support to do a resolution of that magnitude?
And that's what I kind of felt that, you know, the, out of the three that I read through, and that kind of went with the comments that I got from the public were, that were in support of a resolution, was the, the middle of the three that, to me, I think spoke more about Batavia's commitment towards world peace than the other two. I feel really nervous about, one of the lines, I think, was in the first one, about the, the federal HR bill, that's the House resolution, that you have no idea what's in it, because it's probably going to pass at 2:00 in the morning, and I just would never feel comfortable with any of us saying yes to that, without knowing what could be in it or not in it. Trying to pull this up here to see if I can get to the third, or the second one. Yeah, that was the Bolingbrook one, that was in the middle, that I think, in my mind, the way it's, it's written, and, you know, speaks to what we would reject as a statement, you know, about what's going on. And it also includes other conflicts, which I think, in the broader sense, I think we're all against that. I mean, you know, whether you want a resolution or not, you don't want to see people killing each other, you don't want to see people raping, you don't want to see all the things that we know are wrong in this world happening. And if that's something that we do want to say, that's the one, I think, that's closest to what I think the majority of the sentiment would be here if we were to, you know, stand behind a resolution.
I think Alderwoman Lehman is right. We should straw poll and see, do we have any interest in doing a resolution of any type? And if so, let's continue on the discussion, and if not, we could spend two hours.
Right, and, and I don't think that that's fair to put the public through, that's fair to put us through.
Agreed.
If we don't have that.
Support.
Support ready for a resolution.
Agreed.
Do we, do we need to make a?
Straw poll, you don't have to.
We can do, we can do that, and that'll, you know, gauge that. I don't know if we want to do it with a roll call, or do we want to just?
Why don't you read the Bolingbrook?
I think we're just trying to decide.
We're deciding whether, whether or not we want to have a resolution, or have a discussion on what the resolution is going to say.
Not at the moment.
At the moment, we're trying to make up our mind whether or not we want to have a resolution. If we do, then yes, we want you to talk, and yes, we will allow you to talk for that. So at the last meeting, you asked for us to have a meeting to talk about whether or not we're going to have a resolution. At this time, we have to decide that, so at that point, if we decide we're going to have a resolution, then we would ask you to speak on, you know, your support of what things you would like us to say. We have to allow public comment, and we will, after we make the decision on whether or not we want to have a resolution. We already had discussion and public comment about whether or not we were going to bring this back. So I'm not telling anybody that you're not going to be able to speak, we have to make our decision first.
Well, this is just a straw poll.
Right, and this is just a straw poll, whether or not we do this. Anyone on this council can make a recommendation and ask for a motion to approve whatever we decide on at any point, so that can still happen. So just, you know, I want everybody to be aware of that, and we're not going to restrict speech. I mean, I might limit the time you can talk, but we're not going to restrict that.
I say go around the room, asking for the straw poll.
Want to just do a typical roll call? We'll start, just like we would for a council meeting.
At this point, a straw poll is more raising your hands, as opposed to taking an official tally, because that way we can be nimble if we decide we don't want to do something, or we do want to do something. And that said, I don't believe that any amount of testimony will, will change your mind from one resolution to another, if I'm lucky to get you to join this thing. I don't feel comfortable forcing any kind of resolution on anyone who doesn't want to, but I'm treating a full house tonight like 50 witness lips that need to be paid attention to. That seems like the fairest way to do this. I don't have a problem staying here so many that listen to people talk, but it's not useful. It's not. It's nuances of what this resolution reads like. And again, I'm not trying to be dismissive. Is that a fair way to say it? We took, we took 15 hours of testimony on Campana, and the project failed. I don't regret any of those 15 hours. 15 hours of testimony.
I think with a straw poll, you just, people just got to, let's just do it. I mean, I don't care if you raise your hand, or if you say yes or no, or what, I mean, let's just find out the numbers. Do we want to have a, a discussion on a resolution for a ceasefire? I was up.
I was up.
Either way, I think it's close enough to have the discussion. I don't think, personally, I wouldn't vote for something on a ceasefire, but if we're going to decide to do something that's about peace, or a proclamation, or something, I think that could be part of the conversation, but we're, we're close enough where I don't think we want to shut these people down because of one person who's not sure.
And I mean, when it comes back to council, we still have two that aren't here as well, if we were to do that. Dan?
The way that I kind of see this going, if I could just put a recommendation out there, is definitely we'll take the people's comment and listen to them, but I think, you know, all parts of the resolution, there isn't one resolution that, like, screams at me that I absolutely like, and what I would like to And what I would like to maybe suggest is that with some of the members of the audience, work with some of the council members or staff to maybe come together with a resolution in the direction that we're looking at going, performing.
I think that could... I mean, we could talk about that for a month before we would get anything out of it. I mean, that's my fear with that. If...
Do we have a hurry to get this done besides...
Some committee wouldn't have the authority to speak on behalf of the council, so we might be spinning our wheels.
Okay.
That's all.
I was just...
It's a wonderful idea.
I mean, as I thought about this, you know, since we had the last meeting, I want it as short and sweet and simple as possible if we're going to pass something, if we're going to do that. And I think back to mayor made a comment on the way out of here at night was, take a picture of the Peace Bridge, send that and tell them to stop killing each other. I mean, it's really that simple. The reality of it is that's what we'd be saying and what comes out of it, we don't know.
We're putting our sentiment, we're putting in public improvements, we're putting public money into the selfie stainless there. We're putting good karma into the world here on a constant basis.
We'll take public comment now. I'd like to try to have you try to stay within three minutes or so, just real short and sweet, exactly what you want to say. I think we are all aware of the passion that every one of you has, whether it's personal connection to it, however you're connected to it. You know, I don't want somebody to not feel like they're heard, but I also want to give everybody a chance. And if everybody took 10 minutes, we'd be here forever. So if you can keep your comments direct and to the point, and we can move right through this. Thank you. And we only need your name for the record.
Should we be resident?
Nope. You can't ask that anymore.
My name is Peter Kozak Rivera. I'm here to speak as a human being, not a resident, just a Jew. I don't know if you've heard a lot from my community so far. I implore you to pass a robust resolution calling for an immediate ceasefire and permanent ceasefire in Gaza, the reestablishment of vital aid routes, which will end up, if we do not do this, will kill far more people than the bombs have so far. And three, the safe return of all hostages. What could be more balanced? I live down the street from my local masjid. It's a Muslim mosque. And last Friday, I passed by during Iftar. One thing I noticed was the local police standing guard outside. I knew why they were there. The sight evoked memories of my own childhood experiences attending synagogue. Growing up, I became all too familiar with the presence of guns, police, security perimeters surrounding my place of worship. It was a stark reminder that there were individuals who harbored ill intentions towards me simply because of who I was. These thoughts extend beyond my own safety to my own Jewish godsons, who face the unsettling reality of being targeted solely because of their heritage. I harbor no sympathy for Hamas, and I condemn their actions unequivocally. Yet I firmly believe that the path to lasting peace and security cannot be paved with vengeance, violence, and destruction. History has shown us time and time again that military intervention alone is insufficient in resolving complex conflicts. The wars in Afghanistan and Iraq following 9/11, as well as the decades-long conflict in Israel and Palestine, serve as painful reminders of this reality. Moreover, the disproportionate toll of civilian casualties, particularly children, only perpetuates a vicious cycle of retaliation and violence that endangers all our children, my God children, and little Wadiya less than 30 minutes away from here. Not 1,000 miles away, 30 minutes. I believe that the key to rendering Hamas irrelevant, not destroyed, irrelevant, lies in addressing the root causes of the conflict and providing the Palestinian people with hope for a better future by advocating for dignity, equality, and justice for all. We can create an environment where violence becomes not only unnecessary but unthinkable. Please pass a resolution here that is meaningful. In Judaism, we're taught that to save one life is to save the entire world. One small act can carry immense significance. Batavia has a chance to play a meaningful role in making the world safe for all children, whether here or in Plainfield or in Rafa or Tel Aviv. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Next.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Martin Byrne. I'm a Batavia resident, have been my whole life, or almost my whole life, very active in the community. And the reason that we're here tonight to talk about Palestine and why haven't we brought to you resolutions on other conflicts, other atrocities in the world? Well, we are funding this. We are funding what we are doing to the Palestinian people, you and I, as taxpayers, as US Americans. I found it interesting that Alderman Ayazi brought up that point because I told him that over email very clearly. And he decided not to engage with me, but rather to insult my intelligence baselessly. So why do I care about this conflict? Because I'm not Jewish, I'm not Muslim, I'm not Arab, I've never been to the Middle East. I live here in Batavia. Why do I care? Because I'm a human being. Six months of this, 32,000 Palestinians dead, so many injured, displaced. These are just the physical scars, but so many will have these mental scars for the rest of their life. What's going on in the Middle East right now is not okay. 70% of civilian infrastructure bombed, 32,000 lives stolen, lives diminished to numbers, children and their aspirations for the future killed by Israel, and the survivors with their lives but no longer their livelihoods or their parents or their children. You and I are funding this, and it has to stop. We must not accept this. We must never accept this. This is not a war between Israel and Hamas. This is not Israel defending itself. This is genocide. This is collective punishment. These are war crimes. No country has the right to commit these crimes. Palestine may be far away, but that distance is not filled with difference. Palestinians are humans. We all look up at the same sky and see the same sun and moon. We drink the same water and have many of the same aspirations as human beings, to be in good health, to be safe, to feel good about ourselves, to contribute to our community, and to be a good neighbor. Humanity is so broad and different, and yet we share so much the same. Desmond Tudu said that if you are neutral in situations of injustice, you are taking the side of the oppressor. A genocide is not the time for neutrality. Now is not the time for neutrality. Peace on earth is not a neutral statement during a genocide. Now is the time not to be weak, not to be watered down, but to be strong, to be unwavering in our values. Now is the time to strongly and clearly and energetically cry out for peace and justice. Martin Luther King said, "The time is always right to do what is right." Now is the time. Now is the place. Ceasefire now. Because this resolution and this discussion, it's about Palestine, but it's also about Batavia. It's about our values. It's about what we value as Batavia. Your strategic plan says that you value diversity. We all know that Batavia values peace on earth, and that's peace for all, not some, not light-skinned people, peace on earth, peace for all, for all of us, human rights for all. Batavia has a reputation as a town of decency, a town of good neighbors who help each other out. Aren't these the values that those of you who are parents teach your children? Aren't these the values that make Batavia a good place to live and do business, a place we can all be proud of? A place that isn't ordinary but is special? It's these values that make us what we are, and this is about our values. And I know that when you all watch these atrocities that Israel with our tax dollars has inflicted on the Palestinian people, you're horrified and you're appalled. And it's easy, watching all of this unfold, to feel helpless and think, what can I do? What can the Batavia City Council do? Well, you have the chance to do something tonight and in the coming discussions. You're not powerless in these discussions. So don't throw that away. Don't discard that power. Use it. So because you're not helpless, to borrow a phrase from Angela Davis, "Don't accept the things you cannot change. Change the things you cannot accept." We can do this. We can do the right thing. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sinam Singh Mago. And today is actually, happens to be the first day of Sikh Awareness and Appreciation Month in the state of Illinois. So I'd like to say, "Wagrujika kalsa, wagrujiki fate." And that translates to, "The pure beek long to God, and it is to God that they owe all their victories." And I noticed that there was a prayer that was said earlier in this meeting. When we started the meeting, you started off with a nondenominational prayer, which is great. This is Easter Monday after all. It's a holy day. I'm neither... I'm not of any of the Abrahamic faiths. I'm neither Christian, Muslim, or Jewish, because this is not an aspect of religion. This is just, we are here in peace. But what I would like to add to this is that while we're talking here on Easter Monday, the birthplace of Jesus, who was born under occupation, is being bombed with our tax dollars. So that is something that we have to take into account. And also, I would like to add that we always are able to pass resolutions after a genocide has finished. So how impactful is that? And I'll tell you, it is impactful because my people experienced a genocide in 1984 at the hand of Hindu nationalists in India. You know? This is something that no Sikh American or Sikh anywhere in the world can forget. Never again means never again for all people. But that genocide in 1984, it took years and years for California state local boards like this to pass a resolution that talked about that genocide. And then all of a sudden, it bubbled up, it bubbled up, and then last year, they passed a resolution that called it a genocide. The Indian government still refuses it, denies it. And we know because Sikhs have been targeted in America and in Canada, one Sikh was assassinated in Canada by the Indian government. So you say that these international issues don't matter, but they do. When you give this recognition, now the American government is protecting my community from the Indian government and Hindu nationalists within Modi's government because they're targeting Sikh activists for this type of stuff. So when you pass a resolution when America is literally involved with taxpayer dollars, just sent $18 billion worth of fighter jets, you know, you say that that doesn't matter. Well, how about the local resolutions that passed in the early 1900s all across California to recognize Armenian genocide? And to our shame, our nation didn't recognize it until 100 years later. Do you think that the local communities that pressured their state governments, we heard earlier, a resolution you guys were talking about, you're trying to use that resolution to pressure Springfield? You think that that doesn't have an overlying effect to pressure the federal government and so on and so forth? I think that you guys should not be gaslighting us because ultimately, if you think that we have to go to Washington DC, then you're saying that this... Who has the money and the resources? You are our representatives. All politics are local. So if you represent us, it is upon you to then put the next man up and pressure then our state government, then pressure our federal government. And this is not an international issue. This is an American issue. Israel cannot exist the way that they do without America supporting it. So if we say that Netanyahu is in control of this, no, he's not. In 1982, Menachem Begin was engaging in a genocidal attack on Lebanon, invaded Lebanon, and with one phone call, Ronald Reagan said, "Cut that crap out." He said an expletive, and he called it a Holocaust. So just understand that the power of America to tell Israel what to do, they're our client state. We give them $4 billion a year. Please don't insult our intelligence. This is an American issue. Thank you, and God bless.
My name is Catalina Rodriguez. Thank you so much for allowing us this opportunity to talk today. Today is such an important day, not only for Batavia, for Illinois, for every single one of you on the council, but most importantly, this is important to the millions of people who've survived this genocide so far, who are clinging to their lives, waiting for the world to do something. International law has been deemed useless. War crimes run rampant, all while the world is watching. This is not the time for neutrality. It is time to take steadfast actions on all levels of government in order to push for change and until there's an immediate and permanent ceasefire in Gaza and an immediate humanitarian aid given to the Palestinian people. This is not a political issue nor a religious one. This is not a war. This is a genocide. This is the biggest humanitarian travesty of our lifetime, and what you decide to accept today will not only send a message of what Batavia stands for, but will directly impact how many more people will live or die. I know to some local representatives, they feel that this statement is somewhat inflated, but they feel that the local actions mean nothing or have no impact on foreign policy. And to me, this reaction is very telling. If any elected official feels so disempowered to think that their stance on this humanitarian crisis means nothing, what message are you sending to every single person sitting in this room in front of you today? If we can't reach you here in front of us, our local representatives, how will we ever reach our state and federal representatives? Congressman Foster said himself that he would only consider a permanent ceasefire if he received local resolutions en masse. We need to hold our state and federal representatives responsible, and we need you to send this message. If this request is too cumbersome for you, I ask you to please self-reflect and ask yourself why you are even a public servant. Why does it matter? It matters because we are funding this genocide. This message cannot be watered down. It must be clear. There is a genocide occurring. Millions of people are nearing a man-made famine. Children are dying from malnutrition, and aid is being held at the borders. All this can change in a minute if the US would demand a permanent ceasefire and demand humanitarian aid into Gaza. I hear you, and I see that you want to be careful about your dialogue, your words, your language, but how do you tiptoe around the fact that this horrific mass killing is occurring? Women are giving birth to underweight babies like no doctors have ever seen before. Doctors are forced to perform C-sections on women without anesthesia. Children are losing their limbs and undergoing the same exact thing. Burn victims and those injured are forced to nurse their wounds with dirty water and no antibiotics. There are no words to make this sound just, no neutral stance that will make... that will have any impact to stop this. A neutral resolution does nothing to stop this genocide and reeks of an all-lives-a-matter rhetoric that is not only dismissive but insulting to these people asking for your support. This plea is not because we feel like this cause is more important than any other, but we make it out of desperation for all the people in Gaza who are displaced, starving, and under constant bombardment. Batavia's Peace on Earth Act will lose all of its meaning if we can't take a strong stance today. This resolution must call for an immediate and permanent ceasefire in Gaza and an immediate humanitarian aid for all Palestinian people. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Aikthagil. I'm an Indian-American, and I am from the Sikhism faith as well. I am here tonight to urge this council to pass the ceasefire resolution specifically brought to this council by Batavia residents. I first want to acknowledge and appreciate this council's willingness to discuss and add to the agenda a ceasefire resolution. To answer the question, why city council resolutions, like has been stated before, I will simply reiterate, state representatives, like Bill Foster, have made it clear that local city council resolutions allow voices like his to be stronger in Washington. Batavia will be among the first to join a chorus of growing Illinoisan voices from Chicago to Villa Park to Urbana to Bolingbrook. It is important to make our voices loud... I am here tonight to urge this council to pass the ceasefire resolution specifically brought to this council by Batavia residents. I first want to acknowledge and appreciate this council's willingness to discuss and add to the agenda a ceasefire resolution. To answer the question, why city council resolutions, like has been stated before, I will simply reiterate, state representatives, like Bill Foster, have made it clear that local city council resolutions allow voices like his to be stronger in Washington. Batavia will be among the first to join a chorus of growing Illinoisan voices from Chicago to Villa Park to Urbana to Bolingbrook. It is important to make our voices loud and clear, so our message is not just heard, but actually listened to. And the message must be this: ceasefire now, ceasefire permanently. Not some wishy-washy, "We want world peace," as if we're competing for Miss United States. A few days ago, I watched an interview with a recent, with a State Department official, Annel Shaline, who recently resigned due to the State Department and its, and the administration's stance and actions regarding Israel's war on Gaza. She said, quote, "And I just want to be clear that Israel is in violation of US laws, whether it's the Leahy laws or the Foreign Assistance Act, Section 620i. The law is very clear here," end quote. In case anyone does not know, the Leahy laws explicitly require that when it is determined that a foreign government's military units are committing gross human rights violations, those units are no longer eligible to receive US military assistance. There is also the part of the law that if a foreign country is blocking US humanitarian aid, that also violates their ability to receive US military assistance. Israel is violating both of our Leahy laws. She went on to point out that multiple countries, multiple international institutions have determined and publicly called what is happening in Gaza a genocide, including the United Nations, to which we, the US, are a signatory and a sitting member, including the International Court of Justice, that found in January this year, Israel is plausibly committing acts of genocide, and told Israel, "It must do whatever it's in its power to prevent this from happening." An example of Israel's response: They recently, in the last week, invaded Al-Shifa Hospital, and the Israeli army and its soldiers have admitted to executing 400 people, including children. How is this not a violation of our laws? And yet, these are just the most recent violations, from thousands, that have occurred in the past six months. We are about to enter the seventh month of this genocide. Netanyahu made a speech yesterday, saying that he is going to invade Rafa, a city that is currently sheltering 1.5 million refugees that the Israeli army told to go there for their safety. Now, they are there, stuck, to be picked off like rats in a cage, because that is what Israel's government has been telling us and showing us over the past six months. They consider the Palestinian people vermin to be exterminated. Killing children does not make anybody safe. Indiscriminately bombing with 2,000-ton bombs does not make anyone safe. These actions, these choices, are designed to exterminate and kill people. Israel is committing genocide against the Palestinian people. The US is a signatory to the genocide convention, and in that convention, it is made very clear that it is not just the duty of every signatory country, but every person who is a citizen of a signatory country, to do what is in their capacity to stop the genocide, when and where it occurs.
I need to stop you. We're past four minutes already, so.
Okay.
All right? Thank you.
My name is Youssef Ahmed. I figured I'd go next, because my phone's at 5%, so I kind of have to. So I am a Batavia resident. I was on the executive board of the student council as a treasurer. I'm also a proud alumni in the track and field, so unfortunately, I didn't make it to state, although I was an alternate for the relay team. So yeah, today, I'm speaking to you as a Batavia resident alumni, calling in favor of this resolution, calling for a ceasefire. You know, you've probably already heard, I want to keep this short, you've probably already heard of the statistics and the facts. A couple, just a couple more, you know, places that have been targeted in Gaza have included hospitals, schools, churches, mosques, grocery stores, apartment complexes, and refugee camps. And I was just looking online right now, and during the course of this city council meeting in Batavia, in the last 15 minutes, there was another airstrike that killed five aid workers who were helping distribute food. So I actually work with Helping Hand for Relief and Development, which is a humanitarian organization in Elmers, and we send containers full of aid to different countries, sometimes Lebanon, Pakistan, some countries in Africa. It's usually used clothing that's donated. Sometimes it's new clothing that's donated from companies that show some passion. So one of the containers we're actually working on this week is going to be sent to Gaza, hopefully. And currently, right now, outside of Gaza, there's trucks that are lined up with a lot of aid. Some of it is medical aid that's desperately needed. Some of it is food and clothing. Unfortunately, due to the bombardment, and those, those borders are closed, and the aid can't be sent in. So that's why we've seen things like airdrops, which, of course, have unfortunately resulted in the deaths of Palestinians from it falling on their heads. So, you know, you've heard a lot, I'm just going to say that, you know, Batavia may be 6,000 miles away, but, you know, our words can definitely reach those in Gaza. I have a couple, you know, followers on Instagram who live in Gaza right now. And a lot of, you know, you might see on like Instagram or TikTok or social media that some of these city council meetings, recordings of those can go viral, and people in Gaza see those, and they see it as a, you know, beacon of hope, that yeah, despite people who are on the other side of the world, they still care about us, they show empathy. So I'm calling on us, you know, as a welcoming community in Batavia. I've been to the high school here, I felt very welcome. In fact, there was a Palestinian exchange student that I met, who was the first person I met at Batavia. So let's show Gaza and the rest of the world that, you know, we stand on truth and justice, like we opened with the meeting. I think it was mentioned earlier that the Peace on Earth sign, which is, you know, just 100 feet away, and if we want to live up to the value of peace on earth, then we have to, this is the time to do it. So, you know, respected aldermen, I really appreciate if you could vote in favor of it. Just a word on the impact. I think, you know, even if we don't think that Batavia has much of an impact, like it's been mentioned, you know, this can go up the chain, and if, at the very least, it gives hope to people like me, who have friends who have lost family members in Gaza on the last week. I personally, you know, emailed and called my reps repeatedly. I actually went to DC, and I protested in front of the White House when, back, I think about what, a month ago? Two months ago, January? It's already January, but um, yeah, so I've done my part, and I think, you know, in the, in the intention of doing everything that I can, I think that's where a local resolution can definitely have an impact, whether it's, you know, forwarded to Representative Foster, or, you know, just gives encouragement to other communities across Chicagoland and Illinois. I think that can definitely have an impact. So yeah, thank you for your time, and I appreciate you all doing so much for our community. Thanks.
My name is Shannon Cameron. I'm going to try to directly address some of the points that you all brought up in your discussion. I appreciate the discussion very much, and again, I thank you for putting this on the agenda. What purpose does this serve, especially at this level in Batavia? Well, as a mental health professional and as an educator, I can tell you, it is affecting local residents here every single day. Young children are seeing that some children deserve food and others do not. Some women deserve to have full hysterectomies right after giving birth, and some can be saved from bleeding out. Some children are currently being taught that their lives are worthless and other lives have worth. And what, how does that impact generations to come? And people's mental health, and especially our Palestinian and many Muslim brothers and sisters in this community, see the inaction, the incredibly inhumanity of inaction. Alderman, you said, "Why don't you just go to whitehouse.gov?" Oh, we have. We have called every day. We have met with our congresspeople and our representatives. We have demanded and shouted from the rooftops. We've sent postcards, we've sent letters, we've sent emails, we've called, we've called, we've called. The difference between you and them is you don't take AIPAC money, you don't take J Street money. You have, I hope, and I believe, a moral compass, and that you can't be bought, and that you see the impact in your community, and you want to do no more harm, and say, "I believe that we should, we should do something to put pressure." I will also say that no movement that's really done anything that has been impactful, whether that's civil rights, we talked about the gay rights movement, et cetera, has always started with the people. It has always been a grassroots effort. It has never been top-down. So we depend on you, as our elected officials, to put the pressure on to the next level. We're doing our job. We are spending hours and days organizing, attempting to just cry out and say, "Please, stop the genocide. Do something if you have power and you have privilege and power. Please." Other things. It's a slippery slope. We'll be passing resolutions all the time. This conflict is especially egregious, and as other people have said, we are funding it. In a perfect democracy, we'd be coming, and the public would talk to you, and we'd be discussing everything all the time. I realize that's not reality, but that's what a beautiful democracy looks like. Because we can't do them doesn't mean, can't do them all doesn't mean we shouldn't make a resolution. To me, that is a weak argument. The UN has passed a resolution, what is Batavia going to do? Well, our congressional representatives have said they need local pressure to act, but also temporary resolutions have happened, and our representative to the UN has voted no on lots of those things. Not Batavia residents coming up here to speak. Well, there are several here tonight, and several had to leave because they have young children that they have to put to bed. Some of them were here and had to leave early because this was so late in the day. If you want to end the word, go fight it yourself. I just want to put that question out there one more time for you, and really think of what you asked us to do. And please tell me how I can go fight, because you better believe I would rather be there than any of those children that are suffering from famine right now. You better believe that I would go and fight. So tell me how. Tell me how. Tell me how I can get that aid into that country. If you are unwillingness, yes, if you're unwilling to pass this resolution.
Need to stop you now.
Please consider that ramification. Thank you.
My name is Adam Chambers, and I wanted to start by saying that on the day I moved to Batavia, because I am a Batavia resident, I actually met the mayor in the McDonald's right over there with my wife, and I chatted with you about how you're the mayor. And I just wanted to say that I miss your weekly YouTube addresses, which I watched every week, so I wish you could bring those back. I'm going to make some comments that are going to be very unpopular with the audience, because I am opposed to the resolution. So I would like to just ask that people not engage in outcry, as I afforded that same respect to everyone else who spoke. I am a resident of the 6th Ward in Batavia. I am here to speak in opposition to the Israel-Hamas ceasefire resolution for the council. My opposition to the resolution is based both on grounds of jurisdiction and the merits of the content of the resolution itself, and I will speak to both in turn. Firstly, I hope I do not have to explain to anyone that the city council of the city of Batavia does not have jurisdiction over United States federal government foreign policy. This means the resolution is a purely symbolic measure. The people of Batavia hold widely varying views on various conflicts currently going on throughout the world, so making a statement one way or the other would serve only to divide our community. Let's not put words in the mouth of the entire community. Endorsing this resolution would also set a precedent that the city council will take positions on all sorts of matters outside its jurisdiction, and I'm willing to guess most members did not front for their office with this in mind. I personally hold strong views on all manner of philosophical topics generally and federal policy specifically, but you will not see me working to get the Batavia City Council to endorse my personal views on federal tax policy, central bank interest rate policy, the High Seas Treaty, or the Outer Space Treaty of 1967. Let's keep the Batavia City Council about Batavia, and let's avoid adopting divisive resolutions like the one before the council today. Secondly, I am opposed to the contents of the resolution on principle, and I unfortunately feel it is necessary here to engage with it on its merits to ensure that dissenting voices are heard, and as we have seen, every single other person has been in favor, and I am the only person speaking in opposition. I want to make sure that the opposing view is heard. I have some expertise in the topic of genocide. I have a PhD in German Studies from the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign, and while I was there, I was involved in teaching a course called "The Holocaust in Context," which helped students to think about the specific historical event of the Holocaust, the causes predating it, as well as its long shadow and reception up to the present day. The topic of genocide was also otherwise covered in great depth as part of obtaining this education. What is occurring in the Gaza Strip is not genocide on the part of Israel, but rather a justified war of self-defense. Genocide requires the specific intent to destroy an entire grouping of people solely for that purpose. The systematic killing of Jews by Nazi Germany is the clearest example of this in the last 100 years, though there are others. The Nazis rounded up every Jewish civilian they could find and sent them to purpose-built death camps and work camps with the explicit purpose of exterminating them, often done by crowding them together in tightly-packed chambers and gassing them by the hundreds at a time like an assembly line. There was no military purpose to this. That is an example of actual genocide. Genocide is not the apt term for civilian casualties and suffering that are the byproduct of a legitimate military campaign. Another example of genocide, or at least genocidal intent, is the October 7th massacre of Jews by Hamas. Hamas killed everyone they encountered, and they did so with glee. Their intent, if they had been technically capable of it, was to kill every single Jewish person in Israel. This is not what Israel is doing in the Gaza Strip. Israel is thought to possess as many as 400 nuclear weapons and a large cache of poison gases. They could have and could still easily kill every single person in the Gaza Strip within a week. If their intent were genocidal or equal to that of Hamas, genocide would have already occurred and been successfully completed as soon as last October. Genocide is not Israel's intent, but rather the elimination of Hamas. This is why only 0.7% or so of Gaza's civilian population has died. Hamas is responsible for the civilian deaths of the Palestinian people. You do not get a free pass to try to annihilate a neighboring state and its people simply because you live in a dense urban area or are cowering in underground tunnels. No state would tolerate the continued existence of a group like Hamas next door to it, and Israel must continue to pursue the total destruction of Hamas. Doing so requires an assault on Rafa. Hamas can end the suffering of the civilian population by immediately releasing all hostages and surrendering unconditionally. There is precedent for this. Both Germany and Japan launched unprovoked wars of aggression in the late 1930s, and both eventually surrendered when they recognized that they were outmatched, as Hamas is in this conflict. They eventually surrendered in acknowledgement of this reality to spare their people further suffering. Some 2 million German civilians are thought to have been killed by the Allies and the Soviets in their campaign to defeat the Nazi aggressor. So let me ask you a question. Do you consider the deaths of these 2 million German civilians to be the main story of World War II in the European theater? Do you weep for the killed German civilians? Or do you consider the story of World War II to be that a genocidal aggressor who launched an unprovoked war was defeated at great cost to all sides in a just war of self-defense?
Sir, I need to stop you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Zaramad, and I'm a resident of Batavia, a student and athlete, and I'm also the Batavia Public District Student Ambassador. So I'd like to preface that any impact is impact, and you have power and you have influence. As members of a global community, it's our moral obligation to speak out against such atrocities and to demand an end to bloodshed. Our responsibility does not end there, rather it extends to our own backyard, right here in Batavia. By advocating for a ceasefire resolution, we not only stand in solidarity with those facing genocide, but also sends a powerful message to the children within our community. We show them that we're committed to justice, compassion, and the protection of human rights, regardless of race, religion, or nationality. According to UNICEF report, over 200 schools in Gaza have been directly hit. Let us set an example for our Batavia students and all students around the world that we do not tolerate such atrocities. Let me remind everyone that any of us could have been born Palestinian, and any of us could be facing the dire famine and genocide. So let us be there for those who are facing it. A ceasefire is not just a temporary pause in hostilities, it's a beacon of hope for those who have been living in fear and uncertainty. It's a chance to rebuild, to heal, and to pursue a future free of violence and oppression. Let us reaffirm our commitment to peace and justice. I hope for Batavia to be a place where moral principles are upheld, where every voice matters. So let us raise our voice in solidarity and demand an immediate ceasefire in Gaza. Furthermore, let us remember that this is a time where many in Gaza, like us, should be celebrating, whether it be Ramadan or Easter. Instead of mourning, they should be able to rejoice in their faith and traditions without the fear of violence hanging over them. Let us take a moment to recognize their resilience and offer support and solidarity to those during the during this challenging time. I hope my words are taken into careful consideration when decisions are made. Thank you.
Hi, city council members. My name is Hamza. I'm a local, grew up around here, born around here. I live around here in Batavia. So I just want to first thank you guys for being part of making our community better, our city better, and hopefully a better world as well. I grew up in Boy Scouts, so I'm an Eagle Scout. I've served as a scout master for local kids. One thing we always teach is civic responsibility and being a good citizen. And I think one of the most important parts of that is to ensure what we say in the Pledge of Allegiance, which is establishing liberty and justice for all. Justice for all being one of the most important parts of that. I'm here in support of passing the ceasefire resolution, and I think it's a responsibility for us as Batavians to let our representatives know that we condemn Israel's ethnic cleansing and genocide. You know, I think Chicago is a testament to the fact that we can have a thriving population of Palestinians here, and the reason they're here is because they were ethnically cleansed from their homelands. And if you just drive a few minutes away, you can find Little Palestine just outside Chicago. And as that community grows from all these refugees that we're going to have, they're going to move to Batavia, and they're going to be here, and they're going to be part of our town, and they are part of our town. I can see a lot of Batavia residents here who, you know, know Palestinians, are Palestinians. And it's important for us to make sure that they know that we don't stand by and watch a genocide happen to them and just say it doesn't affect us, especially when we're funding it, you know? We in this room have to live every day knowing we probably just funded the end of Christianity in Gaza. We probably just funded the end of multiple families in Gaza. We probably just ended, you know, bloodlines that date back to Jesus. And as a person who works in tech, I work probably one of the biggest tech companies you can think of, one of the Fab Four, I've seen internally how information is controlled, and especially is the information that's presented to our citizens is specifically made to make you think this is a war and not a genocide. Anything related to aid workers being killed, anything related to the fact that you cannot claim self-defense against an occupied people, you can't kidnap someone and claim self-defense against them. And it is an inherent responsibility for those who are occupied to stand for their justice, just like we see, we call for justice for all and freedom fighters around the world. But I think this matter is super important to us because we can see members of our community who are aid workers and who also pack aid. I've been part of that. I packed aid for Gaza myself. That aid is sitting outside the fence as Israel prevents it from getting in or kills our aid workers who take the aid that I packed and doesn't prevent it, prevents it from getting to families who need it. So I implore you to, you know, pass the ceasefire resolution, encourage our representatives to pass it on to the higher levels, and hopefully we can tackle this as a community. Thank you.
My name is Saleh Khalid. I thank the mayor and aldermen for listening to Batavia constituents and adding this discussion to today's agenda. I'd like to use my time to address the claim that a ceasefire resolution falls outside the jurisdiction of the city council. First, state and local governments have been passing resolutions to challenge the federal government's policies since the earliest days of this republic. In fact, founding fathers Thomas Jefferson and James Madison both wrote such resolutions on behalf of US states. In 1798, the federal government passed the Alien and Sedition Acts. These laws passed in the name of national security were extremely controversial at the time and are widely considered unconstitutional today. In response, Jefferson and Madison both wrote resolutions in opposition that were passed by the states of Kentucky and Virginia respectively. Moving forward to the 19th century, several American towns mobilized to pass resolutions condemning the Fugitive Slave Act of 1850. Under this law, the federal government required citizens of free states to cooperate in the return of escaped slaves, making them active participants in the enslavement of their fellow human beings. Advocates of those local resolutions faced opposition from critics who said that local governments had no business commenting on federal policy concerning interstate affairs and that they should stay focused on traditional local questions. That criticism sounds very familiar, doesn't it? If you fast forward to contemporary times, local governments have passed resolutions to oppose nuclear proliferation, to oppose the Iraq War, to support the signing of climate change treaties, and to oppose US engagement with apartheid South Africa. In the case of anti-apartheid resolutions, the city councils were fiercely criticized for getting involved in international matter. Today, we look back and acknowledge those same city councils for showing leadership and moral courage when Washington failed to do so. What I'm trying to say is that Batavia passing a ceasefire resolution would not be a revolutionary or unprecedented act in the history of American city councils, as many have already done so to influence federal policy. My neighbors and I are not asking you to nullify any federal laws. We're not asking you to engage in international diplomacy, to contact foreign governments, or to send humanitarian aid. We're asking you to just to support a resolution that addresses an issue with direct relevance to your community, an issue of great concern to your constituents. We're asking you to follow in the footsteps of past municipal legislators who passed resolutions to stand on the side of peace and justice. We're asking you to be brave, like your colleagues in Bolingbrook, Villa Park, Urbana, and dozens of other US municipalities, townships, and counties. Thank you for your time.
My name is Katie Swisicki, and I am a resident of Batavia. I'm also on the Plan Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals. The longer we wait for someone else to do something about this, the more we argue about this somehow being a complicated and equally sided conflict. The more we strive for neutrality instead of sending a strong and clear message of opposition to the loss of 30,000 innocent lives and counting, which is all of Batavia and then some. The more children starve to death in their parents' arms. The more people are disabled, the more land is destroyed, the more our money is spent on all of that. And the more platitudeous and meaningless that electrified message of peace on earth becomes on our city's most prominent landmark. It should be the easiest thing for any human to say they want the systematic intentional slaughter, disabling, and starvation of babies and their parents to stop, unless you don't. Batavia Cannon should go first on this. Don't undersell yourselves or the rest of us. Peace on earth, ceasefire now and forever, and let the aid through. Thank you.
My name is Reem. I live in Bolingbrook, but my son attends Batavia High School. I'm here to support the ceasefire resolution submitted by the residents. 65% of the population supports a ceasefire. There is nothing divisive about asking for a ceasefire and release of hostages and humanitarian aid. If someone views that as divisive, it might, it just means that they're okay with Palestinians, with people like me being killed. I also have an expertise on genocide by being Palestinian. My family survived the 1948 Nekba. Israel has been trying to ethnically cleanse us since 1947. My family is in the West Bank, and four have been killed since October. Israel routinely goes into the West Bank to arrest and murder Palestinian on no grounds but just being Palestinian. It is a genocide. Israel has been targeting hospitals, schools, UN buildings. Israel told Palestinians to move to the south, and then they bombed the south. The people responsible for the genocide are those sending bombs and money for those bombs. And here are some quotes by Israeli leaders. So Benjamin Netanyahu, the Israeli prime minister, said, "We will turn Gaza into an island of ruins." And a veteran of the Israeli army said, "Wipe out their families, their mothers, their children. These animals must not be allowed to live anymore." The Defense Minister of Israel said, "There will be no electricity, no food, no fuel. Everywhere is closed. We are fighting animal people, and we react accordingly." And they said this back in October. The adopted version from Bolingbrook is not the Bolingbrook Resolution. I know this since I was part of the group who worked to get a ceasefire resolution passed there. The piece that was put together was not what was passed, it's bits and pieces pulled from it, but it misses all of the substance. It misses the call for a ceasefire. This resolution cannot be watered down. It needs to call for a permanent ceasefire. Otherwise, it's worthless and pointless and meant to make the board feel good, but it doesn't make any of us feel good. I heard many of you mention peace on earth. If you want peace, you have to call for what starts the peace, which is a ceasefire. Silence doesn't bring peace on earth, action does. You can't claim to want peace on earth while saying you don't want to make comments on matters on earth. One alderman said, "Go over there. We send our tax dollars there to kill my people." Do you understand how hard that is? When our federal leaders fail us, we come to our local leaders. Another alderman said that, sorry, said they felt unsure about supporting a resolution that supports House Resolution Bill 786 because they don't know what's in it. It calls for a ceasefire. It calls for a release of hostages. It calls for immediate humanitarian aid into Gaza and all areas affected by the conflict. It is very balanced, and I encourage you all to read it and to come prepared to these meetings to speak on ceasefire resolutions. And if you don't feel educated enough, I know residents have reached out to talk to you, and I encourage you to take them up on this offer. Years from now, people will look back on this, the way people looked back on municipalities that passed resolutions against South African apartheid in the 1980s. Don't you want to look back and have passed something to be proud of? Thank you.
My name is Danielle Slager, and I'm a Batavian resident. I really can't say more than what everyone's already gone over, all the talking points that you guys have made. And thank you for having the discussions. I know this isn't easy, but I just want to read to you what I did send to my aldermen. But again, I think everyone's done a really good job of, you know, just having a talk back on your discussion points. I stand here tonight to support and urge you to adopt a strong and clear resolution calling for an immediate and permanent ceasefire to end the genocide in Gaza. Batavia has a reason to pride itself on how it shows up for its community and its neighbors. We rightfully acknowledge and celebrate it across our various public bodies and our many support organizations. We drop everything and vocalize a need for support and aid without question, time after time. Showing up for our Palestinian community members and neighbors should be no different. I realize that our society is structured in a way that encourages us to shy away and feel uncomfortable for speaking up for vulnerable groups. But really, what harm is there in using our voices for those who can't? What harm comes of being physically responsible by saying we don't want our tax money to help fund a genocide that's murdering innocent civilians by the hundreds on a daily basis? I implore you to understand and value the power that your voices do have. As commented before, your vote on this matter is needed for the foundation of a ceasefire resolution and enable it to move up the ladder to Congress. If our representatives have said they'll push for one when smaller governmental bodies do, here's our chance to hold them accountable and be the voice that our community needs. Poll after poll shows that the majority of Americans support an immediate ceasefire. Data shows that more hostages were released during ceasefires than any other time. We have seen and heard story after story of how this is not a war seeking the safety of hostages. Children and women, innocent civilians, are by far the majority of those who have died and been severely injured. Not calling for an immediate ceasefire allows and supports the humanitarian crisis in Gaza to continue and only worsen. Now, I do understand how difficult it can feel to make decisions which impact goes beyond your personal circles and beyond your family and your own needs. These decisions don't always sit well and can feel conflicting. But at the end of the day, the ceasefire resolution causes no harm. I think you would rest better knowing you have tried to help those who have been stripped of their basic humanitarian needs, those who are going to be facing generations of trauma, those who are literally starving to death and fighting for their lives minute by minute. Won't you rest better knowing you use your power to help voice a demand for immediate ceasefire? We are watching a genocide unfold in real time. Will you help our current community and future generations continue to proudly live in a city that rightfully boasts itself as a place for peace on earth for all, one of which used its voice to stop a genocide? Or will they learn about a genocide that we all stood by and watched unfold in real time and did nothing about? Will we choose to side with the fear of feeling uncomfortable, pushing against a system that's working to politicize and justify the constant murdering, blockage of humanitarian aid, and ethnic cleansing of millions of people and children? I implore you to support an immediate ceasefire resolution, using the wording that Martin submitted during the last city council meeting. Gaza's civilians who survive will have such deep-rooted trauma that will last for generations to come. While we cannot possibly take away that trauma, we can be a community who supports them and provides a change in their path forward. Thank you.
I am Zara Maad. I go to the Batavia Public High School. I'm a constituent of all of you, and just of you being the council in general. And I've heard from everyone today, and what everyone has said has been what is needed to be said, and beautiful in all of their own ways, people in support of the ceasefire. And I believe that we might be losing some of you, some of you guys might be a bit bored or tired of the long wait that's been happening. And I think what's needed to be understood is not all of you are in these positions forever. If it is the people who directly support and allow for you to be in these positions and stock our shelves and pave our roads and do all of these individual things, they support the tax dollars to have you guys even have salaries in the first place, you guys have to understand if you're not standing for us, we will not stand for you. Ceasefire now, power to the people, and the apartheid in Gaza.
Hi, everyone. My name is David Cannon. I just want to ask, what would you have done when faced with slavery? What would you have done during the Civil Rights Movement? What would you have done during the Holocaust? I mean, as a Batavia city council, what would you have done? Could you and would you have done anything? And I want you to genuinely think about that. Would you vote if you could stop apartheid? If you could stop this ongoing genocide? Would you and will you? Because it is before you. There are dozens of people that have come, spent their evenings, spent so much time and energy just to get you to care about this issue. I know there's so many other things happening in city Batavia that are so much more fun and interesting to deal with than this. But this is something that means a lot to a lot of people. I don't know, I honestly think there is a gap between the media that we are viewing probably and that you may be viewing. I don't know if you're on Instagram. I don't know if you're on TikTok. I would encourage you to follow Eyeye on Palestine. You will have to remove the filter that hides disturbing images from almost all of those posts because it is a constant stream of the most horrific things you've ever seen in your life. Teenagers at Batavia High School are seeing this every day, every day. Their mental health is suffering, all of our mental health is suffering. If you're not seeing that, I think you have looked the other way, maybe not intentionally, to be completely clear. But I ask you to open your eyes, look at what is happening, please. We have better things to do. We want to be with our families. We want you guys to be with your families and not be doing this right now. So I humbly ask you to please consider passing Martin's proposed resolution. Just get it done, and we can move on. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
It doesn't look like we have anybody else, so I'll say thank you to start with. You know, this is an issue, I think, as you've all seen already, that we have a lot of different views on. I think at this point, I would say that, you know, I think we need to decide, do we want to go further with this? And try and... want to go further with this and try and craft a resolution that a majority of us would support? Or where do we want to go?
Vote on a motion to do it or not do it.
Right, but I think we have to pick what version we would want.
Well, what version we'd want would, I think, would still take time.
Right.
So, I mean, to me, the original vote or motion would be, are we going to pass a resolution? Right? And then if so, what that resolution should be.
Right.
That's not a motion, though. That's just a straw poll.
Yeah, that was a straw poll to see if we wanted to have the discussion about having, you know, to pass a resolution. So I think at this point, if somebody wants to make a motion, because we really didn't have a resolution.
Alan, can I just make a point of clarification? So we really wouldn't be able to officially vote on anything tonight because that's not the way that it is on the agenda.
Right, this is a discussion.
Tonight is the discussion, and so then you would just make a direction, whether you wanted a resolution to be put to a future committee of the whole or not.
I would point out, if I could, that it would certainly seem like, just based upon some of the comments by other members of council, in terms of, you know, being in favor of possibly passing a resolution, that the type of resolution that some members have indicated they might be willing to consider certainly doesn't seem to encompass what all of these speakers want, which, again, puts me to my point of, I just don't think that this is our position of something we should do because there's very passionate views on these things. And clearly, if we pass, you know, something similar to, you know, let's just say the Bolingbrook thing, that's not going to make anybody here happy anyway. So, I mean, what's the point of it? What's the point of it? That's just my thought on this. I mean, I think it's a very passionate situation. I think that everybody's made very, very eloquent talking points. But again, I just go back to my situation where I don't think that there's ever going to be full agreement on wording of a resolution that's going to be satisfactory to everybody and everybody's views without offending. And I mean, that's, the whole thing is, you know, I'm just not sure that we really should dive into that, that end of the pool.
Thank you. So, thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight. I really appreciate it and taking the time to be here and sitting through our first meeting. So, and then, thank you. You know, and some of the people who spoke tonight even referred to this too, but at the beginning of all of our city council meetings, we pledge allegiance to this flag, and we have a wonderful Flag Day monument that is right outside this room that we all were at, and we're at the groundbreaking, at the ribbon cutting. And this flag represents freedom for people who've come to this country. And we say that we stand for justice, and we stand for truth, and we stand for freedom, and this is our opportunity to make a statement. And I don't see how asking for a ceasefire, which would benefit everybody over there right now, would be a hindrance to us or our city. So I will make a motion to put on a future meeting to pass the resolution that actually Martin brought to us.
So we have two aldermen that have requested that to be put on a future agenda as a...
A specific resolution is what she's asking for.
Okay.
Well, I would like to make comment to that in reading all three of the resolutions that were shared with us. The, I believe the resolution that St. Paul passed is most encompassing of what, it condemns all the evil that's going on from both sides, and I encourage everybody to look deeper at that. I find it absolutely unacceptable that our tax dollars are going over there and this stuff is happening, and we can't seem to rein in an ally. That's very problematic, but there's also been, you know, egregious things that have happened from a terrorist group. So I think identifying all the evil doers, so to say, is more important in my eyes. I believe it would be important for this council to put out a resolution there that we do not find it acceptable, what's going on, and taking a stance on it. And I believe the St. Paul resolution that was passed does that.
I would just call that it's clear that those of us who want to vote in favor of a resolution, that it's clear that we are asking for a ceasefire.
Absolutely. Which the Bolingbrook one does not.
It does, and it's original.
The one, yeah, the one we were given.
The one that was passed.
The one that was passed by Bolingbrook has ceasefire language.
Yeah. Alan, paper.
I was just speaking in support. I think, I believe I preferred the St. Paul resolution, but I will also support the first one as well.
I'd like a piece out of each one. I think there's things that, to my mind, where I see agreement on certain things, I think there's things in each one that would, I would like to see in it if I'm going to say yes to it. And I think the ceasefire is part of it. I think, you know, the aid and allowing that in, I think that's the other part that I really want to see in there. And the fact in the reworked Bolingbrook one, the way it comes out about the reasons why Batavia wants to support that, those are the parts that I think need to be in there. You know, and to keep it specific to that, the reason why I brought up the House resolution is because that hasn't been passed, that hasn't been signed. So, just like everything else that gets passed at the federal level that nobody reads every page of, and I guarantee you, I don't think anybody reads every page of what comes out of Washington before they sign it and say yes to it. I just don't think that we should have a blanket statement that says we agree with something that we don't know what it is. And I know you think it's out there, and I know you think that the wording is what's going to be approved. We don't know that. You don't know that. So that's why I don't like that part of what Martin turned in. And I have to tell you, out of the 20-plus years that I've been on the council, you're one of the most thorough people that have brought something up and tried to present that to us that I have been a part of and watched. So I really want to tell you how much I appreciate what you've done and everybody in the room that's been here both times. You've conducted yourselves extremely well. There was things that we have gone through, and Dan alluded to one, that were just off-the-wall craziness. I had to threaten a clear room twice. We had to have extra police in the room because it got that edgy in here. So, you know, I have to commend the people that have come up and spoken and the people that have sat in the audience and, you know, responded during different times. It's been handled really well from that side of the dais. Thank you.
After that, very difficult LGBTQ night where we had protesters speaking against the pride flag, and I thought I had failed that evening to deliver a good presentation. And you'll suddenly get sturdy, have a pint to make it home. I got an email from my constituent at Batavia High School saying, "I just wanted you to know, I watched you guys in your debates tonight, and I appreciate the difficult debate that you guys had. It brought me to tears. It brought me to my knees." That was Martin that wrote that email. Please, live in my ward, and if I don't deliver, they're going to run against me or get into me that I'm an old-timer. So, Batavia High School puts on some good kids. They really do. Thank you, Martin.
Well, I think with the direction of the two aldermen that asked for it, I think I would, if we can, I guess, pick out parts of what we want and try to direct staff to put that into a resolution that we think we can garner enough support for to pass, you know, or alleviate some of the things that people have thought about or...
Let me give the writer an opportunity to take constructive criticism to make sure the thing actually passes.
Subgroup of all of you work together on what parts you want from which one and then get back to staff to draft it? How will that work?
I don't know. It's like designed by committee. I always hate this part of the meeting, you know, when we have to try to pick out the things that we like. I don't know. I guess my proposal would be the reworked Bolingbrook one, but get in language in there that talks about making sure the humanitarian aid can get through and that there is a ceasefire on both sides, return of the hostages. I mean, that's what I hear. That's what I feel like I'm hearing from the majority of everybody that's spoken in the group, you know, and when we were here, all 14 of us, you know, to be able to put that down and feel like that's not just a feel-good, but a statement of what we feel like we believe.
Well, we can do the same thing with Martin's resolution. We can take their resolution and turn it, you know, to something that we're supportive of. And as I already said, we already know at this table, not everybody's going to vote for it, so we don't need to water it down so much where we're trying to get a 14-0 approval.
And that's not what I'm trying to say. I don't believe I'm going to convince everybody that if we've made it what we could all say yes to, that that's going to happen, because I don't think that's going to happen, because there's always going to be a dissenting voice, or very rarely does it not, especially on something this, you know, this big.
So can I just maybe make a motion that we take the next week, read over the resolutions again, and then come back on the next COW to draft the resolution?
Does it require a motion?
Well, we can't do, we can't do a motion on this because it's a discussion item. It's not something that's votable during this meeting that we could vote on.
Alan? Laura? I would just say that realize that each meeting that we go on, it's likely to be the same amount of comments period as well, too. So if you were to select one or more of the versions to just actually vote on next time, then you could be assured of having a concrete direction going to a city council or not.
And that's kind of why I suggested the one in the middle and adding in, you know, the ceasefire provision, the return of hostages, the allowance of humanitarian aid through it, to bring in the things that we've heard time and time again from public testimony and from people on the council.
Mark?
I've heard my point on this before. I agree with Alderman Millay that I thought that the St. Paul one was covered the most. When I read the three of them, I thought it covered the most, and it was the least controversial. I don't know what to say about that. I know that, you know, the audience to my left is, you know, looking at me as this is a cop-out, but there's, nothing is perfect, but some leave out details that others might find objectionable. So it's, you know, there's eight billion people in this world, and probably about half of those feel one way and half feel the other way. So we're not going to please everybody, but that one, there's things that are left out in the Bolingbrook one and Martin's one that I think some would find objectionable, some of our citizens would find objectionable. So that's why, yeah, we're voted into to make tough decisions, but I still think that if you're looking for something that has a little bit more balance, the St. Paul one had the most balance.
We haven't hit 10 o'clock yet, so we've got a few more minutes.
Would you like to have all three versions, but with the original Bolingbrook version that their council passed, and just have those be three different resolutions that you vote on?
So we could try and see if that's something that floats through. I mean, I think we're at a point now where it's very difficult for that.
Take a straw poll on Martin's, see where we're at on that one. If nine of us are in support of it already, we'll probably pass counsel.
Do a straw poll on the versions?
I would start with Martin, so, because that's the one that's, who brought this to.
We could put him in Lancy's back if we're going to do that.
For both Martin's and St. Paul's, and just make sure that...
Because we countered.
Not sure, has everyone seen St. Paul's resolution? I haven't heard much discussion of it.
I just find it to be very wordy. I just find it to be very wordy.
Yeah. It would have to be modified, obviously.
Yeah. A lot of the audience were very clear of what they were looking for. Immediate ceasefire.
And that's included in it.
Aid, yeah.
And that's included in that. But it also condemns the attacks of Hamas.
Yes, permanent ceasefire. Thank you.
Yep. Yeah. I'd be more inclined to go with the St. Paul one. If we're not going to try and modify the Bolingbrook one, so I think, you know, unless somebody else wants to take a stab at modifying one, then I think we do a straw poll on, you know, Martin's the first one that was submitted and the St. Paul one. If we want to put those onto two separate resolutions, there's not support for the one in the middle with modifications, then we put the first one and the third one on Martin's resolution and the St. Paul one. We'll have two to vote on. And if anybody doesn't have any changes or anything they want to do on them, I think we put those two on the agenda and we vote on it. That gives us two options. Anybody have a problem with that, or do we want to keep talking about it? I think we do that. That work for you, Laura, for put those two on the agenda?
Yes.
So in two weeks from tonight, we would vote on those at the city council meeting. Anybody feel any different?
What if they both pass?
Then we're sending two resolutions to Washington.
It's Chicago, we vote.
Right, and anything can happen, so. Okay. So are you two okay with that being the direction for staff, since you had asked to have this on the next meeting? If that's the direction for staff, then we'll have those two to vote on in two weeks. Okay? Okay. Progress, we're moving forward. Now I have to find my agenda again.
Chairman, I think that the extra, the executive session, it being 10 o'clock, we can just wait until next Tuesday for that if you'd like.
Okay. I say just do it.
Just do it?
Yeah.
All right, yes.
Yeah, it's not like it's half hour.
Right.
We've got a clear room.
Are there any, are there any others? Are there any others?
No.
Okay, so then at this point, I would ask for a motion for adjournment to executive session.
Second?
I have no idea.
Okay, who made the motion? Because I heard like three of them. Solfa made the motion and seconded by Uwer.
Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, we're not going to go into executive session, so thank you all for your comment and your...